It's five o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get it started. Uh, we're gonna ask Pastor Barham from the Elmer Park Church to give us our opening prayer that will soon be followed next by Ms. Patricia Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. Let us bow. Dear Mr. Father, we thank you, God, for allowing us to simmer together today. We ask God that you'll continue to move and bless God in this city, in this office, God, for all those who are representing our communities. We pray, God, that you continue to crown them with wisdom and knowledge. Give them direction, God, and as discussions take place, God, I pray that great decisions will be made according to your will and your way. So move in this place, God, then let us work together today, God, to bring a better community in the city of West Memphis. And so we thank you for it. Our mayor, we pray that you continue to give him strength, God, in his health and his mind and his spirit. And those that are supporting, God, I pray that you continue to strengthen us to be able to hold up his arms as we continue to march forward to bring this place, this city, into a better standing. And, God, we just ask that you'll get the glory in everything that we do. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this a little warm in here?
Yes, it is.
It's a little warm.
Yeah. Some, someone hit the air, hit the air, man. I'm gonna call this meeting the order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Sutter. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Hope.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Muhammad.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
I hear from Councilwoman Muhammad, she was going to the doctor. She said if she could make it, she would be here, but, uh, she probably wouldn't get out the doctor in time. We had. I did hear from, uh, Charlie. Charlie is recovering. Uh, he's still weak, uh, but he's doing better. Hopefully, he'll be back pretty soon. Just keep me your prayers. I did hear from Councilman Hope, uh, so.
This granddaughter's a car broke down.
Okay, okay. I understand that. Uh, we had no bid openings. Uh, was there any other correction that we talked about, about the minutes?
Motion previous minute.
Second.
Yeah. All right, uh, can I get a motion in second to approve the, uh, minutes?
We did.
We did. I don't know, Ms. Patricia, that kinda threw me off because, because, uh, this back called, called the roll. She did call the roll. All right. All right. Read down the obit. This is, uh, let's see the attorney, will you call this?
All right. This is the second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 514 South Fourth Street permitting an auto wrecker service and auto storage in a I-1C industrial light core district.
All right, that's read for the second time. Did anyone have anything on that? Or we just bring it back in two weeks? All right. City Attorney O2.
This is second reading of an ordinance to amend section two dash one seven one of the West Memphis Municipal Code establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
Councilman Crum?
A motion to suspend the rules and read it for the third time.
Second.
All pay, bye. Opposed?
This is third reading of an ordinance to amend section two dash one seven one of the West Memphis Municipal Code establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
And discussion. Well, I think he told us that he didn't want it anyway. So, all right. Uh, will you call the roll?
City Treasurer Sutter.
Yes.
Councilor Cat.
Yes.
Councilor Crum.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Hope. Councilor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad. Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Murray.
Yes.
Councilor Willis.
Yes.
That motion is approved. Will you get that ordinance or number?
Ordinance number twenty-six thirty-three.
That number is twenty-six thirty-three. We had no obit in this.
Thank you.
Welcome. Permission request, permission to accept the contract for the new accounting software, Tyler Technologies. Uh, Ms. Tori and Kyla Johnson, we'll be going to, uh, it's been for two days to get some hands-on experience with this, uh, new program. And it's something that the auditors have encouraged us to, to go ahead and get. And I think we've been talking about this for some years, sometime. We already have the money budgeted, and, uh, I think it's time to move forward. Is there any other discussion? Uh, we had a quick meeting on, on the seventeenth, and I think most of you all from the council was able to make it to, uh, asking the question or getting the understanding, but if you're having the questions, now this be the time to ask.
Mayor, if I may, uh, and I've been bugging Ms. Perry this week. I thought we had missed a step in this entire process, and it was the, the bids that they were actually received from three different companies. Asked her to, you know, to give them to Patricia, she can print them off. I didn't remember us receiving them, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had a copy, so. Now, Ms. Perry, can I explain to you why you chose Tyler?
So, um, after we got the bid tabulations, um, we requested a demo from each one of them. Um, after we went through the demo, CSA wasn't actually able to provide us a demo, so we X'd them out off the bat. Um, and we did Oracle and Tyler. Oracle was kind of, um, closed off, right? It was only financial information that we could get out of their system. Tyler has the ability to, um, incorporate the entire city, so with the future in mind, we decided to go with Tyler.
If I may, you know, I'm gonna have a question.
Go ahead.
I did, I missed the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but I did, uh, converse with Councilor Cat, and, uh, he answered my questions about this. And, uh, I think the main thrust was, will this system provide the information for the council, like, within two weeks?
Absolutely. So.
Okay.
The system will be open. Right now, we have to close each month, and it's a manual thing, right?
Right.
When we get this new system, it'll be wide open, so I can give a report at any time, any day. We don't even have to wait till the end of the month. If you wanna know something about sanitation, I can give you their report when you ask.
Good.
Um, it doesn't have to be a manual thing that has to be calculated by me or Ethel. Um, the system can provide those reports for you.
I do have a question about how this being where you, the books will close automatically, you don't have to manually with all your journal entries. How does that free you up knowing to get those done?
Well, so right now, I don't enter my, my journal entries into the system. I, I give them an Excel spreadsheet that'll process it, puts, puts it in the system. Once I put my JVs in the system right then and there, they'll be there. There, there will be no closing process. I won't have to go through multiple prelims to check the numbers. Everything can be done the day I sit down and do it. So it, it is gonna, it is gonna provide real-time data, it's going to be more efficient, more effective, and it's gonna be easier for the girls to use, just all around. Uh, although it's something new, all of the girls have been very excited about this system. It's, it's gonna shorten up their process in how they enter invoices, how they, uh, distribute checks, uh, just all around going to update how we do things in the city.
I gotta go.
Yes, sir.
Kind of cut down on the length of time that something is processed.
Yes.
That's what we're hoping for.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It will.
And also have that each employee can go in there and look for themselves about them?
Yes, so, yes, that's the Kronos part. You talking about.
Okay.
The payroll and stuff like that. Yes, ma'am, that's included in this as well.
Okay.
One other point, uh, council members.
So council members will have their own login, so to say. So, um, instead of me printing off reports or even emailing you reports, you can log in and look at them yourself.
Cool. That's good.
That should save on the paper, at least.
Yes, please.
Uh, was there any other discussion? All right. Here in, uh, Ms. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Cat.
Yes.
Councilor Crum.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Murray.
Yes.
Councilor Willis.
Yes.
That permission request passes. Can I get a motion in second to approve the charity days for the city council members and the mayor?
Moved.
And discussion?
I just want to step back. Uh, I know Ms. Perry and some other employees wanna go to a, a live site with a city that's already been running this software.
Okay.
She'll come back, give us an update, a report on if there's anything in there she found she didn't like or whatever, or the fact she's still just in love with it, so.
And also her assistant will be going to her candidate and her assistant.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
You all, charity days.
It was a motion and a second.
Motion and second. Was there any discussion about the charity days, what we're going to do? Each, uh, council member and the mayor, we're getting nine hundred and fifty-one dollars a pa, a piece, uh, distributed the way we were doing it. All the pa.
No, no, I just, I started building a spreadsheet for, it's overall for the charity day disbursement, so the council members can look in there who they gave money to five years ago. Uh, so I'm extracting that data from the minutes. It's just taking me longer than I thought it would do, so.
Does anybody wanna commit on their charity days today?
I'll let it rest.
Can we, can we make a, a, a motion to do that?
Let me, let me, let me, um, get this motion, then we approve this.
Okay.
All pay, bye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved. Now, Ms. Hutchinson?
Uh, actually, pass for a moment. I, uh, I wanted to ask or request money to go to the high school, Ms. Tori. But to ask, um, right now, I will be asking a question, would it probably be ready by May fourth, by prom? It's hard to say.
May four?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, and I'm sorry.
The total, so.
I just thought about it, and we should've discussed it in pre-council.
That's fine, not to cut you off. So, like, probably a month ago, you all got one seventy-seven fifty-five, and then with this new amount, it's nine fifty-one eighteen, so your total, um, I think besides Dr. Bruce, 'cause I think he used his one seventy-seven, your total is, uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. And then yours would be, Dr. Bruce, yours would be nine fifty-one eighteen.
In addition to what we have left, though, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, you have, you have more left.
Right. If, can I make a request, council? I want to give, uh, five hundred to the academies.
Mayor, if I may make a motion, we add this to the agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let's, yeah.
Second.
All pay, bye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, I'm asking, uh, may I give five hundred to the West Memphis Academies, please?
Got a question.
Okay.
You have a question?
So, yes, so when you give it to the academies, what will it be for?
Okay, thank you. It is going to be for our prom promise, um, essay. We will have five, I will do five individuals, award them based on the purpose in the, the purpose of prom promise. This is gonna be an essay. Uh, in addition to the fire department, they will do an essay, but their award will be actually going up in the helicopter. So my, we're, we're doing it together, but mine will be the monetary part, and then one individual gets a chance to go up in the helicopter. But it's for prom promise and it's for essays. I'm going to divvy it up between, I don't know how many students right now.
So that was my question, so.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I think you need to go ahead and make a stipulation.
Okay.
As to how many students?
Okay, so, um, the reason why I asked for five hundred, I'm gonna do.
So it, I'm saying that sort of be clear to the academies, how this money should be.
Well, normally, when I've done it, I've done it in the past, uh, Dr. Bruce. I might do a thousand, I might do five hundred, and we would do ten children, a hundred apiece.
Okay.
I don't know if I wanna do five children this time, or do I wanna do two hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, but when I give it to, I mean, when we, what happens is the academies, I give the check to the, the school. The school gives it to the children, but by the time, by, by that time, Dr. Bruce, I will have, uh, specified, you know, with the essay and how much the awards. I've not got a chance to talk with Mr. Bobby. That's kind of why I'm kind of all over the place right now, and I don't wanna say one thing on record and it be different. Um, so.
Okay, so I just need to make sure, Dr. Bruce.
The amount.
I can just send it to the academy of West Memphis, or do I have to specify something else?
I think you need to specify.
Yes.
You got to specify, because you don't wanna get the money and they use it for whatever they want.
I can put it in the, I can put it in the, um.
It will be specified. I've done it before, and it's, it's specifically for the prom promise awardees. Like I said, this will be my, I, I do it off and on. We've not had prom promises due to COVID, and we were doing things a little different this year, and we're dealing with different people. That's why I couldn't kind of answer you, and I'm dealing with a different person.
I can put it in the, um.
Memo.
Memo.
That's what, that's what we've always done.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, Dr. Bruce, let me, and I'm glad you asked, it's no problem. As a matter of fact, not only do we specify, but for each child, it's designated who the child is, that child signs off. It's documented, you know?
No, I'm not saying, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, that's fine, but you wanna.
It's broken down when it gets to the academy.
Yeah, you, you wanna make sure it's specified in how much you gonna give each, each student.
And that's what I'm saying.
And that's all, I'm saying.
That's what we, I understand what you're saying. You want that to be specified on council, as on record, as opposed to me just making sure that they know.
Yep. Again, you're dealing with someone new, and I think that's really what he's wanting to hammer, to make sure that this new individual doesn't make a mistake, that, you know, just clearly communicate it to them.
No, no, I'm dealing with the coordinator as far as the, the essay. Now, the money goes, I always give the check, the check to the office, and the office has a list of who it goes to.
Okay.
They're giving it up, but I, the reason why I didn't wanna answer is because I've really had, Mr., the, the coordinator, the new coordinator, it used to be Dr. Ring. The new coordinator, we've not had an opportunity to kind of.
And I mean, he'll do, he'll do a good job, I'm just saying, just specify how much money each student gets. That's all I'm.
I understand what you're saying, and, and, yeah, uh.
Think it's a great idea, but I'm just saying, just.
I, I, I know it's a great idea. We've done it, and it's been great, and it's, it has, I mean, it's been a help to those children, but, uh, I was just saying, to go on the record, I'll do, I'll do five.
Well, excuse me, Ms. Hutchinson, can you all, we approve it, and you just give it to Tori once you come up to her, where you want to.
That was Dr. Bruce, uh, Mayor McClendon, if we wanna, you, you may wanna address that to him.
Well, we're, we're passing, and we're letting, uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson and Tori specify.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean.
Did anyone else?
But you didn't, you still didn't get your answer. You didn't get your answer.
I'm, I'm good with what you stated. I'm fine.
I just wanted to be clear.
I'm, no, I'm fine. I'm fine.
All right.
Did anyone else wanna contribute any funds? Who, none, all the pay, bye? Or Ms. Hutchinson? Opposed? It's approved. All right. Next, uh, our presentation to the fair house and proclamation, and I ask Ms. Marilyn Felix, will she come up and read the proclamation and accept on?
Good evening. Uh, I will be presenting this on behalf of Mayor McClendon, the City of West Memphis Proclamation. Whereas April twentieth marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the enactment of Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight. This landmark legislation was amended in nineteen eighty-eight by the Fair Housing Amendments Act, which expanded the coverage of the Title Eight of the nineteen sixty-eight Act. Title Eight of the nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen eighty-eight Acts, generally referred to as the Federal Fair Housing Act, made it the nation's policy to assure that fair housing becomes a reality throughout the United States by prohibiting discrimination in the sale, rental, or financing of housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin. Consequently, it is altogether fitting that we mark April twenty-twenty-three as a time for rededication to the spirit and purpose of the national goal of fair housing for all and the renewal of the commitment as citizens to make the promise of fair housing a reality for all Americans. Whereas, as a nation, we have come a long way over these fifty-five years in meeting the national commitment. Whereas, it becomes the responsibility of every American to make their personal commitment to ensure that all persons are afforded an equal opportunity to obtain housing. When each and every American makes their personal commitment to justice and fairness, discrimination will no longer exist. Whereas, I am deeply committed to the goal of fair housing and equal housing opportunity for all Americans. Further, I am firmly convinced that the overwhelming majority of all Americans are similarly committed. Accordingly, we must now join together and translate our commitment into a clear, living reality by reaffirming our individual commitments and ensuring that fair housing practices and equal opportunity in housing does exist in all of our neighborhoods across this great land. Now, therefore, I, Marco McClendon, Mayor, do hereby complain, proclaim the month of April twenty-three, twenty-three to be Fair Housing Month and invite all my fellow citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. This proclamation has been signed by Mayor Marco McClendon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felix. Committee reports, we're gonna start with fire.
Yes, the Fire Commission met on April the eighteenth. Um, there are no vacancies on the fire side. We currently have positions for ten paramedics, and we're vacant one. Uh, there were no retirements announced. The personal protection equipment that the firefighters were fitted for should be received in October. Uh, all the equipment is up and running, functioning well. We received two bids for the station at Jackson and Eighteenth, uh, roof issue. That'll be referred to administration for your decision. Training, we have two firefighters in the, in class. They have two weeks left, and they're doing quite well there. EMS calls here to date, it's one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three. EMS collection, sure to date, one hundred and fourteen thousand six ninety-nine seventy-six. The East and Lane Training Facility, they still aren't giving an estimate yet on when that's gonna be opened. Uh, they're still working on, finding a few things. I'm trying to find a pipe for them, so, well, that'll hopefully give us an update next month. They've applied for the twenty-twenty-three Safer Grant, have not received any notification yet, and we're working on a program for the fire hydrants on, uh, getting them accounted for and repaired when necessary, so.
Did you wanna proceed with budget?
Uh, budget had been and reported last, last month. Uh, the utility met on April thirteenth. Uh, they approved the minutes from March eighth. The March safety report, there were no incidents, no injuries. It's been forty-three days since the last injury occurred. The AMI project, Superintendent Maria Adams, she gave an update. Uh, she stated, as of April twenty-twenty-three, they have installed approximately three thousand electric meters out of the twelve thousand. She else, also stated that by mid-May or the first of June, contractors will be starting the installation of the new water meters, new composite boxes with lids, and the AMI Ertz. Uh, other item on there, where the ordinance, or, excuse me, three ordinance that the council passed at the last meeting, just updating the commissioners, uh, and especially with the interstate issue with getting that power to the north side. The committees that they are forming are very close to being completed, uh, and then they will meet once a month, and a report will be given to the council, uh, as each, each committee meets. And that concludes utility report.
Thank you. Airport Chamber?
Uh, the Airport Commission met this morning, uh, at eight o'clock, and, uh, the, uh, pre-bid meeting for the North Apron Rehab Project will be on, uh, the eighteenth of May, and the bid openings will be scheduled for the, June the first. A jet, a rehab project, Rebel Services has been sent a notice to proceed starting June the twelfth for the service work, and June the nineteenth for the electrical and installation for the credit card reader for self-service at the, uh, fuel pumps, or aviation pumps, I'll say. Uh, there was a five-year contract recommended, uh, with, uh, Shetterfield Aviation Fuels upon the city attorney's approval of this contract. In exchange, Shetterfield will contribute twenty-five thousand dollars toward the Jet A tank rehab project and remove the old tank, um, and the old pumps. They will also repaint and install new decals for the, um, ab gas tank and equipment, so everything will look fresh and new. And then the Chamber, do you want me to go ahead with Chamber, Chamber Report? Uh, this is a, really a two-month report, because basically the same things were pretty much discussed. There was a discussion in, uh, included adapting the Chamber's Student Leadership Program around the new West Memphis School District Hybrid Calendar. Adult and student leadership programs will kick off this fall. Uh, Leadership in Roman is now open. You can visit the Chamber's website to apply at westmemphischamber.com. And, uh, in March, the, uh, Chamber heard from the Arkansas State Chamber on the upcoming legislation that will impact businesses. The upcoming events, uh, in the area that we need to be aware of are Main Streets Pop-Up Shop, April the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, Families and Transitions Festival on the twenty-ninth, that is the Walk a Mile at Her Shoe fundraiser that they're doing, and Way Good Ribbon Cutting on May the fifth, and Blues on Broadway every Thursday in May at the Civic Center. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Personnel will be next week, uh, the next council meeting. Um, that was all the committees that met. Did I overlook anything? All right, let me get a motion in second to add the appointments of the A and P to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All pay, bye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is added to the agenda. The first appointment that they had was, uh, I Tori Breisman, who is, uh, in order to get an industrial position, would be you would have to either work in the hotel business or a restaurant business, so that's the only way you can get that appointment. Is there a motion in second to approve?
I make a motion.
Uh, you wanna call the roll? Uh, it's a, it's, Jim, is there a US appointment? The industrial, one year?
Well, they all, at December, or actual date of appointment? Okay. Okay.
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris? Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
Yes.
All right, the appointment is approved. The second appointment we're gonna have is to elect a large position, is Mr. Kirby Carson.
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Council Hutchinson?
Pass.
Councilor Monday?
No.
Councilor Murray? Councilor Willis?
Yes.
Those two no's and one pass, yeah.
What is it?
Three no's and one pass.
Thought it was two no's and one pass.
Two no's and one pass.
Yeah. Five, two.
Ms. Hutchinson, did you wanna vote? Miss Hutchinson, did you wanna vote?
Pass?
Pass.
Six passes. Not six passes. Can I ask a question, right?
Go, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Were you gonna say something, Ms. Patricia? Uh, my only concern, the, the at-large position, can someone just tell me, if you know Mayor, how long is that? That, I think that's kinda sorta where we were about this at-large position. So when we put whoever we're putting in this particular position, they'll be there how long?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
Jim, do you wanna come up and I guess, give a little more information about that?
I'm gonna say, because this is not a new position. I don't think the term is four years. So they're filling an expired term or someone who's already left. So it may be one year, it may be two, but Mr. Jackson can tell you for sure.
This, this one that we're discussing right now?
The at-large position, yes, it is a four-year term by the state statute. And the previous at-large was just nominated and reappointed in January. So yes, this person, Mr. Carlson, would be a four-year, basically a four-year term.
Question. Because I think there's a lot of confusion.
Mm-hmm.
Because if I'm not mistaken, it says that the at-large position was the mayor's appointment. Am I correct?
No, sir. According to the state statute, the at-large position, when a, when an A and P commission is formed originally, is the city administrators. But then, once a, a opening occurs due to death or whatever reason, the rest of the members nominate the at-large and the others with city council's approval.
I think we need to bring that ordinance so we can look at it. Do we have it? Because from what I was reading, it said the at-large position was the mayor's appointment. But it went on to state some other stuff, but I think, I think the council should have some, something in, in writing so we can look at it.
Well, I have shared.
Yeah, Dr. Bruce, I've, I've, Jim and I have talked about it. I've looked at the statute. It's, I'm not gonna say it's not confusing. It is somewhat confusing. But I agree with his, what his interpretation of it is, because that was my interpretation as well. I think we talked about it probably a month ago or something like that. I can't remember how long it's been, so I hadn't looked at it in that long. But I'm not gonna sit here and tell you the statute's not a little bit confusing, it is.
Yeah, 'cause I think that paperwork needs to be brought back to the full council so we all have, uh, paper in front of us that we can look at and discuss.
If you have time, you wanna do that right now, we can do that. I have a copy of it on my phone, I have a picture of it.
No, I'm.
Well, that's, could we just bring it back at the next meeting?
Yes, I think that would be best. So everybody will have, have it in front of them and we can make, uh, a better decision.
Okay, so we got a vote already. I guess you can still table before it's approved, but I think, I think we had a vote counted already. So it kinda puts us in a different position than before the vote was taken. I assume you can, the motion to table would take precedence over anything, I think, so I guess that can be done if there's a motion to table.
I, I make a motion that we table it and bring it back. Make sure that, that paperwork is in our package at our very next meeting. So everybody will have it in front of them.
Just to be clear, you're talking about the statute?
Yes, yes, that ordinance, yes.
Okay. So it's not an ordinance, it's a state statute?
It's the state statute.
And to be clear, that's, that was my whole reserve. I just wanna make sure that I, because I interpreted it differently, just, just as Dr. Bruce. So that, that was my, you know, whole reserve with this at-large position.
Yeah, we can get a second then, yeah.
I second.
Uh, favor I? Huh? Oppose, it'd be back in two weeks.
City Attorney's. If you have, next time, what's at that time?
No, I don't agree with that.
Again, that's your opinion and that's mine.
Okay.
The city attorney said that was the statute, I'm not gonna argue with him.
Okay, but the, the motion to table has been stated.
And I voted no.
Okay, well, everybody has your vote. But I'm just saying, I'm asking that.
Miss, Miss Clerk, call the roll.
It be placed in the packet. That's all I'm asking, be placed in the packet so we all can look at it.
Counselor Bruce?
What, what are we voting on?
You're voting to table?
Voting to table, yes.
Counselor Katz?
No.
Counselor Crum?
Say what?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
It's table to our next meeting and we'll get that information to you in your pack.
Mr. Mayor?
We tabled and we're gonna, and we're still gonna be entertaining the idea of, of Kirby Carlson, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one, can I say one more thing? Yesterday at the A and P Commission, the commission was asked by the Sultana Museum about helping with the museum that they have going in Marion. And there was some question on exactly what was involved and information about the Sultana. I think Mr. Murray and Mr. Monday were gonna go tour that on Monday and talked to Mayor Brick today, who was more than happy, actually will enjoy showing you that. But you wanted me to extend the offer to anyone that might wanna go and see the existing museum they have and the plans for the new museum. So I don't know if y'all have decided on a time, if y'all have talked about it. I was gonna let Mayor Brick know.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock, ten o'clock Monday.
So anybody, actually anybody in the room on the council, Mr. Mayor, that want to go learn more about what they're doing with the Sultana Museum, can meet at the museum at ten o'clock on Monday. Is that, that okay? And the museum, the current museum is on the square right across from the courthouse. So I'm gonna let Mayor Brick know that for sure you two will be there and anyone else that wants to come. Okay. Thank y'all.
All right. I have a couple announcements. First, I wanna give you all an update on the Dr. Marlowe DeKeane Project, which is a point-six mile that the city's supposed to have been doing. And I wanna give you all an update. Counselor Crum?
I wanna give you all an update on the Dr. Marlowe DeKeane Project, the point-six mile that we are doing. Chris is getting some surface material changes reapprued, which is states in Apex Plant updated their plant and materials. They are expecting to start in May. He said that the surface material change is minor and doesn't expect to be an issue. I asked him to call when, call me when he's going to, let me know when they restart, and all this is according to Philip Rogers with Chris Contract. So the Dr. Marlowe DeKeane Project, you know, going toward whole field, that part is gonna start in May, being completed. Next thing is, um, the Rich Road Bridge. Everyone listening?
Yes, sir.
Rich Road Bridge. I talked with James Bar. James Bar is the, the engineering firm that RDOT has contracted this project out to. He explained to me, it was in the sixty percent, that's, you know, it go from thirty to sixty, then another thirty, it's ninety, then the ten percent of it is the actual construction of it. He says in the sixty percentile, and then what's gonna happen after then? His best guess for it to be start of completion is in late fall, late fall of this year. I know that many of the constituents have been concerned about it. I'm concerned about it as a citizen, but it's RDOT project and that's what they're going to do, late fall.
Is that the start of the project?
That's the start of the project, that's not the complete.
I think, I think that that would be good, at least it'd be a positive to tell, at least the people in Ward, residents in Ward one and three. Who use it.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm kinda letting them know about, uh, what's going on with that. So it's here in sixty percent of the, uh, project, so that's where we at. I just wanna keep them updated, they kinda know their ass every time. I mean, I can actually say that God taken us all to heaven and someone responded and said, "But what about Rich Road Bridge?" So I wanna let them know that, hey, we doing everything we can as a city, not a city project, but it's a state project, but we still waiting on them. Also, I want to let everyone know that our city clerk has been invited to go speak to any civic organizations about, um, any type of information that, that's city clerk right there. The seniors, the seniors, the seniors, city clerk. Yeah, the senior, Ms. Patricia Lane, has been invited to go to any civic organization to, uh, speak. I know a prime example that we didn't talk about was, uh, one woman with the AARP, she gave her guy her money and they ran off. Want to let our seniors know that, uh, make sure that these, ask these individuals, these contractors, do they have license, do they have bonded, to make sure they have everything so they just won't be taking their money and then they run down here if they don't have these things. There's nothing we can do, but if they do have them, then we can actually go over, um, that process. Is I'm correct? Last thing I can speak on, and, and I'm gonna speak on this real quick, 'cause I'm, I'm a parent, excellent school district, as well as the mayor, and I just feel that when things happen, our city hall has been called a million times. They asking for comments, uh, I've been hit on Facebook, social media, everyone has asked me about what's going on at school. I'm not informed enough to be able to answer those questions, 'cause I want, they wanna know that the school board and the West Memphis City Council are two separate operations, you know? So what they do, we don't oversee it, so I'm one thing that we can overturn what school board does, so I wanna let them know that we are totally separate from that. But as mayor, you know, my goal is to make sure that our citizens, our city is moving in the right direction. And I just hope whatever decisions that are being made, make sure that our children is done in their best interest. That's, that's all I can say on that. And as a father who has a daughter in the school district currently right now, I just wanna make sure they doing everything to make sure that my daughter, along with all the other sons and daughters, being educated, that process is being taken care of. So currently, they asking for information. I really don't know what more we can give them, ask them to go to the next school board meeting to see, you know, to be heard, how they brought this here or whatever they need to do, but, um, it's unfortunate what has happened. I don't know the reason behind what, I don't know, I, I can't speculate on those things like that. Just, uh, just hope this situation be rectified soon enough.
Okay, Mayor, I have something too. You know, we've been talking about the, the parks, especially the park on North, is the North Eleven? We're continuing to have issues, um, with the, the basketballs and things like that. We have the cars now parked on the basketball park, on the basketball pavement, burning, turning, doing whittles and all this type of stuff. And so what I would like to ask is for this council to really think about having those goals removed from North Eleven. It's, it's, it's just, it's going on and on and on.
Let me, let me, let me fix that problem for you real quick. I would instruct Lorenzo Parker to remove the, the goals, but I can guarantee you, that won't stop the problem.
Maybe not, but at the same time, when you have homeowners over there, they're throwing the basketball up against the, the guy's fence, uh, it's just, it's, it's just become a nuisance. And, you know, if we don't do something, I mean, I know we have the, we put the speed breakers down to keep them, people from speeding and that type of thing, then the ball is going over in the young, in the man's fence, then we got the loud music, something bad is gonna happen. Now, you, you know, none of us live across from a park, but people get fed up. We got a lot of things going on. So, I mean, we have a boys' club where they can go play basketball over in that park. Or can we just move the goals and put them somewhere where, put them, put them to the Rogers? They're not gonna want goals there either. So, I mean, when, when we have people that have, are just really saying they're not gonna follow the rules that are there, they, they pulled up city, uh, equipment so they can drive on the thing, that tells me they just, they're not gonna do right. And these are adults. They're just not gonna do right.
And Dr. Bruce, before you came back this last time, the, the provisions that were put down, we put those down so they would not be able to drive on them. So for them to take them up, um, I don't know what our resolve would be, but once again, we, that was the issue, they were driving, you know, on the court and in the grass, so those petitions were put up so they wouldn't be able to drive on there. I don't know, I mean, is this a conversation we need to have?
I, I have a video that I'm gonna share with all the, all the council members, so y'all can actually see what's going on. The paper had a picture of how they trashed the area over there. But when you drive up on, you, you pull up the metal part that you have to keep you off, then you drive your car and you put it on the basketball pavement and burn, just burn rubber and just do, this, that's too much.
Let me, let me, let me add this and, and I have to always be careful, see that turn of how I said to certain things, uh, we'll do what we can to, to make sure those citizens are safe. It just, it just, it just a matter of self-respect that you have for your community and where you live and how you treat certain things. I can't really say what I really wanna say right now about those situations. I always be respectful, but some of us know what these problems are that's happening in our, our community. Now, like I said, with Dr. Bruce, I'm doing everything, I came to work with him to make sure if the goals, if he feel that's the issue, but we know this not gonna stop after years, the goal was taken down and we still have these problems because you have these individuals that sometimes just don't have a respect for, for anything. And that's how they treat our community and until we're, I, I think everyone knows what I'm saying, I just leave it alone.
And, and, and Mayor, even the sky cop has just torn, been torn down. So, I mean, enough is enough now. We, we, we've taken, we've taken, and we've taken. What do we do next? We, we tried to provide a place for the young men to, to, to play basketball, but this, this is not working. It's not working.
I, I would love for us to be able to come up with a, with a specific place where it could be, and I, I think that basketball is needed in this community. I grew up playing basketball, but I do understand what comes along and it's not, and like I said, once again, I keep saying, it's not basketball, it's that element that comes to our courts. And do that because you ain't gonna, you, you ain't gonna do that on Taylor Rogers. Now, why? Everyone here know. If I leave like that and, uh, work with this council and come up with anything, any way we need to do to be able to address it.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of things. You know, I know everybody wants to go, but we have people in the wards too that are wanting to run businesses from their residence. So you, you go out. So you, you go out, George will go out and write a citation or what have you. This person will clean up, but he keeps coming back. We cannot continue to chase hell the cat chasing the mouse. So when do we start writing a ticket to bring these individuals in the court?
Uh, let me answer that for you. Actually, we are writing tickets and mailbag. I just met with George Monday
And I talked to him.
To start, and I told him to write tickets and, and that, that once again, that comes back to that thing. It's just like in certain neighborhoods, you can eat off the ground. I remember my mom and dad always gather up in their clinic, their front yard and in front of their house. If everyone came out and done that, our community would be clean. It wouldn't be someone saying, well, they need to clean up because I'm not gonna clean up their stuff. Just take care of your own. And it always goes back to that certain element. I can ride by, uh, Dr. Bruce's father's house. It's clean. We go look in certain other areas of the city and it's, it's a bunch of. Well, yes, there. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be professional and not say the wrong thing, but you all know what, what we dealing with.
My last thing. When we have dogs running loose in the community, have dogs running loose, especially, especially pit bulls.
Delicious dogs.
So, I mean, who do homeowners see about loose dogs running? Especially pit bulls and just running loose.
Kerry.
You, you go out, I, I got a call last night, 10 o'clock. Lady went out to pull the garbage, 'cause she's been at work, pull the garbage can back. And the pit bull chases her. So now, I mean, what, what, what do they do? Who, who do they, you call the police, the people that put the dog up, they say their dog hasn't been out. So now, we got another problem.
Same, same thing.
Who, who do we, who, who do our homeowners complain to?
That, that Smith, Smith and West. But that's the same thing that I, that I continue to say. I mean, it's just about people taking pride, you know? If you own an animal and, and our community, anyone that owns an animal, but keep them where they can be, keep them where they can enjoy what they do and be, and keep the community safe. How do, how do we manage that? I mean, you know, as the police go out there and see the dog, we're trying to call our animal control. They can come and get them, but there's a process that they go through and can get the dog back. So it's just, you know, Dr. Bruce, a lot of things you've been saying and things that, that think I stay up all night long wondering, how do I fix it?
So, so I guess my question is, so I guess we have to go, come, homeowners have to come up and complete paperwork so this can be brought into court systems. Because, I mean, I know what I'm gonna do if the dog chase me.
What, what you gonna have to do again, what Ms. Harris said, a Smith and West.
So, you know, like I say, you want to say the right things, but, you know, okay, so now we, we know that, that's not, we can't Smith and Western. So is there a process that this homeowner can say, okay, well, where, where do I go? And what do I do? Because they don't want to get in, we, we don't want people getting in trouble.
So with regard to the dogs?
Yes, sir.
You know, you've got an ordinance, uh, that deals with that, but the people to call would be animal control. You know, there's no paperwork that has to be filled out if you've got a dog that attacks you or something like that. Uh, the problem usually is trying to find the owner of the dog a lot of times. But, but yeah, animal control is the person you call. You don't have to fill out paperwork for that.
And, and the police were called, the, the police were called, uh, city attorney. And the first thing that was said was, my dog hadn't been out. Well, we know better. And I know the police have to catch it. But is there something that can be sent out to this homeowner that, 'cause, 'cause I'm gonna tell you, the, the dog is running loose. And, uh, I had to sit in my truck. So now, is there a paperwork that we can?
What happens if a child gets hurt? I mean,
You know, it's, it's.
If a child's attacked, then what, you know?
Well, you can't take no picture when you trying to run to get in the house.
It's like any criminal activity, you gotta be able to catch them, you know? I mean, you gotta be able to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt in court. And, and so proof is something that's necessary. And, you know, a lot of times when dogs are after you, you're not looking to try to identify them. You're looking to get away from them if, if that's a pit bull. And what I've understood and what I've seen unfortunately is people in my neighborhood walk around with sticks. It's not just in, you know, other areas of town, people walk around with sticks 'cause there's dogs loose that come after them. I've seen that myself. And I think that's unfortunate. It didn't used to be that way. Uh, I think a lot of this pit bull stuff is a status thing. Uh, I don't understand it, but, but that's the way I see it. And, and until you can change, people who think that's a status thing, it's not gonna change.
Well, until folk, when, when people start squeezing our rounds, then we're gonna have, you know, that's gonna be your proof.
I, I want, I want you to, you know, be kind of, I guess we have to be cautious, however you say. 'Cause I know I walked down my street where I live at and a little Yorkie ran at the bar and then now I could have shouted, but not so little Yorkie. I mean, I can laugh, so please be patient before you get to shooting at any dog.
I'm not, I'm not, I stay out the way, but I'm just saying, you know, the people have, need some type of avenue.
Let me ask you this question. Do you have location?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then get with me on that location and we'll see what we can do.
The same place. Same place. Same place, man. It's just, it's, it's, it's.
How you, uh, it's a, it's a police aware of the dog actions at that location?
Yes, they came out and they did, uh, meet with the, the family. And of course, you know, they got talked bad to as well when, when it happened. I got the call. And so, and I, and I told them, I said, well, call the police. And, you know, that's the best thing you can do is call the police. That's all you can do. And then, you know, you talk about proof, it's gonna be some proof in a minute.
No, no, whatever you do, don't you shoot that.
It's not me. I'm just saying, not me.
There's a, there's a cruelty to animal state statute that can get you in trouble for, for being, but hold on. You also have a, a, a defense of yourself included in that. So you can defend yourself, uh, from an animal that's attacking you and gonna cause you injury, but not an animal that's not attacking you. Obviously, that would be a cruelty to animal situation. So, uh, I, I sympathize certainly because I, I have the same worries myself.
You know, I, I just, you know, uh, people have I, I just, I'm lost for words.
Mayor, if I may, can I call a point of question? We're gonna amend this, I mean, adjourn the meeting for now?
Yes, we can. I, I, I mean.
You know something? You've been listening to every maze the councilman in Flint, Michigan pouring out all the, oh, yeah.
I just want this to
I, I understand, I understand.
Come before the council so people will understand. Because you, because, you know, a lot of time homeowners, homeowners think that because they own this property, they can just do what they want to do. That is not the case.
I take pictures of stray dogs, cats, all the time. And I send them to the animal director so she can start building a database. So if we get complaints and we can verify that that is that dog, they will do their job. The police department will do their job. But with all the ring cameras and everything else, documentation's out there. They just gotta share it with the authorities.
There's a motion for adjournment on the floor.
Oh, let me, let me say something about the animals. Actually, I did meet with South on, I'll talk with y'all later. But South actually want to donate some land to actually, some of the kennels that they had that possibly move our animal shelter over there and help build a new building for our animal shelter. So hopefully that'd be a great place to, to fit these, these new dogs and Dr. Bruce without pin the bullet in them.
I'm just saying, you know, and, and, and I know we want to join the meeting, adjourn the meeting, but I'm telling you, if my grandkids are out there and the pit bull comes out to chase them, there's gonna be some evidence. I'm just, I'm sorry.
I understand.
It's gonna be evidence.
I got a motion and second to adjourn. Second. I'll say bye. Approve.